Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, November 7th, 2022, 5:30 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
To do the public vote which stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, can you take us through the agenda for this evening?
We will open with open forum, followed by appointment, public hearing with the Board of Assessors, and a whole bunch of action items, and probably a lot of discussion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here for open forum? Chris?
Yes.
Come on, you can squeeze right in.
Sorry, you can call. Just wanted to update everybody. The Tri-Town Parade will be in West Bridgewater on Friday morning. Staging is at Hart's Horn Street, which is one block south of where we're normally. Normally, everybody's on Brewster. So, we are scheduled to 9:00, start staging there 9:00 AM, step off at 10:00. Ceremonies at the West Bridgewater Town Hall and gazebo, 11:00 to 11:30, and then break from there. And everything else, everything else is going good. Anything else that we can assist with on the veterans side, let us know.
Absolutely, yep. Forward to it. I hope to see you there.
Definitely. And again, I want to thank the board for the continued support. Many towns I've met with, whether it's a surrounding town or throughout the state, and the support we get at the town level for the veterans is impactful. So, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you for your work.
Thanks, Chris.
I'm not really sure.
Lady.
Yep, sure. Come on up.
I'm not really sure if this is the appropriate place to discuss.
Come on up and why don't you give us your name and address and then tell us what.
It's Lisa Valentine Griffin at 737 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Mass.
Yeah, Lisa.
So, I don't know. I've never been to this meeting before. I've never been. And so, I just have an issue. So, I don't know if my issue is for the later half.
Well, why don't you tell us what it is and we can.
Okay, it's regarding the signs that were on the.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna have that in discussion.
Okay, so I'll come back.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You get to see the whole meeting now.
I know, I was really hopeful, but you know, what could I do?
All your dreams have just come true.
Nothing like a classification hearing.
All right, so I guess we're ready for our public hearing. Do you want to?
Chairman, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors will hold a public hearing on property tax classifications Monday, November 7th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the first-floor conference room at Town Hall. A hearing which is required by law determines whether the town will have one classification or will differentiate among several classes when setting the tax rate. Paula, you're up.
Thank you. My board's here tonight. Steve Solari, Curtis Buck, and David Phillips. I'm there. I'll be speaking for them and running through the PowerPoint.
Sure.
So, we do this every year. It's simply, as you said in the open meeting, notification, it's whether we keep the same tax rate amongst all the classes, or if we break it up and we do. There's a lot of different things. If we were doing a, like a residential tax rate, which we would never do, but Boston does, things like that. So, there's a couple of different options. Odds would be whether we would split it between commercial and industrial and personal property and residential. So, we'll run through this. And not much has changed as usual as far as that determination and the percentages of what we have. So, this is the supporting documentation. I guess I'll read it for my. An estimated tax rate for FY 2023. The recap associated documents and tax rate where we see final certification by the DOR in November. We plan on doing that the day after the town meeting. We have to wait if there's a pending town meeting till the following day. The actual tax bills will be mailed out at the end of December. And the purpose of the classification hearing is to decide whether to shift the tax burden between the property classes. It doesn't change the total level for the community. It simply determines the share of which each class pays for. It does not determine the tax rate. It does not determine how much money can be raised. A split tax rate will not increase revenue for the town. And East Bridgewater voters determine what the tax levy will be by setting the budget, and then we break it up. Total values by property type at this point. This was, we got certified, our values got certified last Thursday and Friday. Residential, that's the total value of all the houses in town. That's total, commercial, industrial, and then personal property. Single-family homes. I put this up this year. I added five years behind, just because we're all living this dream here. So, 2000.
Is that what we're calling it?
Yeah. We'll see if it stays dreamy or not. So, the single-family, back in 18, 326. That was our average in the town. And then, this year is 473,000. That's a huge.
Crazy.
Can't quite see the other one, but you can see the commercial. They haven't gone up as much, but there's still been a big increase. So, the proposed tax rate, once we're certified next Tuesday, hopefully Wednesday, will be 1445. Last year, it was 1560. It went down a dollar, you know. And however, the, most of the, most everything went up about 12%. So, it all comes out in the wash. The average tax, average single-family home, the taxes, 6580 last year, 6838. It's always usually that increase. It doesn't completely coincide with 2.5%, but it does increase by 2.5% plus our new growth, plus our, the override that we've had, is it an override, or our, what we're paying in, that we borrowed for the school and things like that. That gets added on at the end. So, same thing with average commercial and industrial. That didn't go up. That actually went down a little bit. So, there hasn't been a lot of action on that. Keep pressing the wrong button, I apologize. So, this is how we come up with a tax rate. A tax levy limit was, we can spend the 30,546,777. That was last year's additions to it. Oh, no, that is this year. Additions go, the levy growth, which is 2.5%, so you add the 763,000. And then, new growth. We came in at 369,577. Another good year for new growth. There was a lot of land, and a lot of the auction land that we sold came out and then was, is now being turned into something else, which, you know, large lots and things like that where they didn't have a lot of value. Number one, they were exempt, but some of them were still in hands of land. They were on the tax rolls. But the increase in value is because of that, that use and what happened to that land, as we can see going down Central Street with the buildings and things. So, then you add them all up together. The debt exclusion was what I was trying to remember. And then, that's the total that we could spend for our levy. This was just all the, a chart of the residential, how many we have. So, single-family, 3860. Condominiums, 472. You can go down. It hasn't changed too much. There was a couple of large increases. We got an extra solar array. That was a good increase in value. And we had, it seems like we're picking up industrial. Industrial, there's some warehousing and building around town for that. So, that was probably the biggest thing that changed, besides residential and the housing increases. This is just the pie chart showing what it takes to get to the 60 million, I think, that we had, which was our total budget. So, in conclusion, a split tax rate should not be considered if the combined valuation of commercial, industrial, and personal property does not equal at least 25% of the taxable valuation. East Bridgewater still has only 10% at our commercial, industrial, and personal property. Split tax rates may discourage businesses from locating in a community. They put too much burden on them for savings, say, the residential. Then, the burden would be really great on commercial. So, the Board of Assessors' recommendation to the Board of Selectmen is to maintain a single rate of fiscal year 2023.
Questions?
No.
Nope. Great job, as always.
I think it's pretty straightforward. Obviously, you know, the thing that sticks out the most to me is obviously that commercial. You know, we've got to continue to find ways. And hopefully, with our project, we can see more growth in that area as we.
Yeah, we're, there's things underway, but we haven't captured them yet.
Right.
We only can go till June 3rd, June 15. So, you know, even those large, there was some large, what was it, eight industrial condos over on Plymouth Street. They weren't completed. You know, so that, we'll see those next year. And then, you'll see a lot of that start to happening over the next year or two, especially with so many things that are, you know, in the works.
Absolutely.
Which is one thing that we've been trying to, trying to do for a long time in this town. So, it seems like it'll be a great, the increase in value and then the new growth, you add it into the tax rate. So, we, you know, you still have to come up with the amount, and you get that and taxes. It's just that when you, when they're commercial and they're industrial, you get that money in, but then you don't have to expend it out if it's, say, residential with, you know, kids going to the schools and a lot of, you know, policing and fire and all that, because you have to, you know, a residential community requires that. The more residential you have, of course, you have to increase that. But with the commercial and the industrial, it's just, it's not as taxing on the town. So, that increase in taxes can be given back to the residential in the, in the community, or spent in different ways or whatever. That's up to the budget and the finance and stuff. But I think we're going in a, in a great direction right now.
I agree. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
You need to vote, right?
Yeah, on the right.
Yeah, to, for the single tax rate.
If you have any more question, unless you have any more question.
Yeah, last page.
Yep.
Chairman, I make a motion that the town continue with the single tax rate for the town.
Motion second?
Second, yep.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But you don't need to vote, does it?
Yeah, I'll lay the backup here.
Okay.
Chairman, we can go right into the action items. The public hearing for 6 o'clock is going to be continued, but I think we have to wait until 6 o'clock in order to make that.
Motion, yep.
Go to our action items. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 17, 2022, Board of Selectmen meeting.
Second.
Motion made second. On favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve but not release minutes of the October 17, 2022, Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting.
Second.
Motion made second. On favor?
Aye.
Chairman, make a motion to review request for the change of hours from Team EB Incorporated Doing Businesses Fiesta Mexican Restaurants.
Second.
Made second. Any discussion?
So, this here, they want to start doing a brunch on Sundays. So, they want just, they're just asking to change the Sunday hours from 8:00 to 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM. And if you approve this, then it gets passed on to the ABCC for their approval.
And the state already approves that? That's fine, those hours for liquor sales?
We've done it before for Kenny O'Brien's, requested a change of hours for, to have a brunch. So, they, they did it before.
Oh, good for them.
Motion made second. On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sir Chairman, I make a motion to approve Glenn Tattery to the ARPA Committee effective November 7, 2022, through December 31, 2026.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion?
I think Glenn will be a great asset. He has many years on the Finance Committee in Capitol.
Capitol, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve Lisa Allington to the Finance Committee effective November 7, 2022, through June 30, 2024.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion?
Thank you, Lisa, for coming to our raid. That give us five now or six?
That's six, and they, they will be interviewing one more person. I think their meeting's tomorrow night?
It is.
So, they'll have a full committee again after that?
Yes.
Good.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Sir Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Deborah Chastey as a member of the Patriotic Activities Committee effective November 7, 2022, through June 30, 2025.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? What is the Patriotic Activities Committee?
That's Paul Cannell's committee.
Oh, okay.
They do.
Dee Dee Rogers.
Yeah. They do the flags on the Central Street for the Memorial Day and all that. They plan Veterans Day with Chris.
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day exercises.
Great. Sounds good.
And they're definitely in need of people to join that. So, we thank Deborah for that.
On favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to review and vote on the request of Steve Megan of the Kiwanis Club of East Bridgewater for use of the town parking lot for Christmas tree sales. The event will run for five weeks, set up November 12, 2022. Sales will begin November 20, 2022. Hours on Monday through Friday, 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion?
They had a.
Just make sure you've approved also allowing the signs there.
Okay.
Yeah.
The signs at the.
They always put up a big sign.
Oh, okay.
For the Christmas tree resale.
All right. I'm gonna add that in.
Add to that, that's a motion to approve the signs that will go along with the Christmas tree sales.
Second on the amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to review and vote on the request for Emma Falcons of Tinker Garden, who uses Station Rock Farm on a weekly hour-long play-based nature class. This is a series of events, nine classes, which will be held on Thursdays, January 19, 2023, through March 16, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Three free class, trial classes on December 3, 2022, December 15, 2022, and January 5, 2023.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion?
No, this group has been doing this for two or three years now, and it's, it's not that many children show up, but it's very educational.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sir Chairman, I make a motion to request regarding a trash recycling bill from a resident.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion?
We have a letter in your package from Lisa Coria.
Alyssa.
Alyssa. She's requesting that we cancel her, her payment that she has. She's been signed up for recycling, and she feels that right now she just can't afford to pay for the trash pickup through the town. And I know, we have never, I have talked with DPW. We've had this back in 2019. We had the same type of request. And it's one of those, we can appreciate, I think, situation, but I don't think we have ever made any decision to start taking these away. And people, if they can't do this, and they have to find another way to trash.
Can we set up like a payment plan for her with the DPW? Maybe they can help her get back on track?
We can suggest that. I know we have done that before with water. We have never done it before with trash recycling. We can pass that on back to the DPDAS, and they can set up some kind of payment. But this is going to be a continuous thing. It's going to be in every quarter.
Yeah, I mean, we had a discussion with John to see what, I mean, they, this can't be the first time. They've had someone call requesting this either.
I've talked to John today.
Oh, and he said he never heard, no one's ever heard?
We've had the request before. They've never been approved for.
Okay.
Right.
But have they worked out any, any other agreements?
No, he only mentioned we've done it with water, which we know about. But we can ask him and.
Yeah.
I mean, if they can do that, that would be my hope, that something could be worked out to get her back on track.
Right. Well, we'll send it back to DPW and ask if they can provide us, the customer with a payment schedule.
Okay.
Okay, number 10. A motion to look at land donation on Zero Elm Street parcel, 1D 82-15-0.
Second.
Discussion?
I don't think the property is of any value to the town at all. I know we have looked at these before, and would it be a case where, is this going into tax title? If we don't take it, we can take it and use, you know, make it an exempt parcel. But I'm not too sure. Charlie, what is your thought on that?
Well, my thought would be, if possible, to accept the parcel as long as there are no sort of liabilities.
Right.
The reason I'm suggesting that is the tax title process is fairly expensive for the town. And obviously, you can try and get back what you're paying out, attorney fees and such, to go through the process if you want to sell the property. But if the property doesn't have any value to anybody else, you're never going to get those fees back. The donation process, on the other hand, is fairly elementary. As long as town mean approves the acceptance of the parcel, that would be at the main town meeting, then we say to the owner, you know, draw up the deed, our council review it and such, and we move on from there. But that's far less cumbersome than the tax title process.
Is the only reason for this donation because of the tax bill burden? I mean, what's, what's, what's the issue?
I would have to assume so, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure of any other reason why the first, the property owner would want to donate the parcel.
Right, well.
Well, it says on behalf of the heirs, so is there just nobody interested in?
Right.
Right.
If you look at the property, I'm not too sure what we, we could do with it, ever.
No, nor, yeah. I mean, to your point, I just want to, you know, I think the town's gonna ask if there's any pending lawsuits, or if there's contamination, you know, whatever the case may be. So, I mean, any, any documentation that we could probably muster up prior to that. I mean, we've got some time, obviously.
Yeah, I think, at least, let's get some more information.
Right.
I mean, nobody ever wants to just.
Take a look at it down the road.
It's really nice. I mean, they got a big heart. Just want to make sure that we're not on the hook for anything, you know? All right, thanks.
Number 11, a motion to discuss ARPA funds.
Second.
Charlie?
Yeah. There's a couple of things, and I don't have everything I would have wanted to for tonight. It may be, depending on whether we have any time on the 14th, I'll provide details on the applications. But what we had hoped to be able to do was to take the 27 applications that the town had received under the ARPA grant application process and send them to the county, so the county would determine which ones were eligible. Not that they would approve that in a certain sense of, but we didn't see the sense in going through the full application process and such with the county, unless we knew that in fact, the county would deem them eligible. There are going to be some categories that the town can pay for the proposed grant, and Plymouth County has said, no, we're not going to cover that type of grant. Well, when we contacted them, Melanie and I have been in contact with them during the last couple of weeks, the response was, no, please do not give us all these applications. First of all, all the money that you will be receiving has not been released by the county yet. They've got about 1.3 million available to the town right now out of, I believe, the 2.7, 2.8 that the town's going to be eligible for on a per capita basis. We've already allocated, in fact, the award for the ambulance, which is low over $300,000. We have another grant application for the 350 for the storm sewer project engineering that's going through that. Now, these are about $700,000 available right now. Because we still have other money available from Plymouth County, but hasn't been released yet. What they want to see is a certain number of grants up to or equal to the amount that's available. So, not more than that. And then, they can say whether those particular grant applications are eligible. Or Plymouth County pay money. If they said no, then we can go back and look at the town funds, hopefully that we have in our own coffers. What has happened so far is our committee has started making recommendations, and they need to be brought, those grant applications now need to be brought to the Board of Selectmen for review and a decision whether to bring them to Plymouth County. Melanie and I can work on that during the next week and bring those to the Board for the meeting for the 14th. The Board could either make decisions on the 14th or on the 28th as to whether to say yes, send them to Plymouth County for the eligibility stats. So, that's really the update. I mean, as I said, Melanie and I will be able to bring the Board during the next week, the copies of the applications that the ARPA committee is recommending. The Board, however, has a final decision on this.
Okay, Charlie, we're going to be looking at just three out of the 27 between now and next week. So, that means there's 24 other. At what point in time does, is the ARPA going to stop looking because we've spent all the money? Or we've allocated all the money?
Well, it depends. It really depends on what your decisions are, because you're the ones who, you're going to make the final decisions on these. And Melanie and I can, you know, when we do this work this week, we can provide you with an update as to the money allocated, both the Plymouth County money and the town money, what's available from Plymouth County, what's available for us, and what we've actually so-called spent. So, for instance, the ambulance and the storm water, not storm water, the sanitary sewer project. You say, here's what's available right now. Here's what will become available. We could even probably give you a couple of good guesses. There are various grant applications we're fairly sure that will only be eligible for town funding, not Plymouth County.
Well, wouldn't we, as a board, just because of myself on the board, wouldn't we really have to see what their entire process is before we start getting individual ones? There may be, the board is only going to see three. Now, the board may think that some of the other ones might be more important than these three. And that's.
Well, I guess you could do it a couple of different ways. One is, as you mentioned, wafer recommendations on all 27 from the ARPA committee. The second is that you could, as they make recommendations, have a sort of divide your decisions into three. One is, yes, definitely left, yes, let's do this. One, another, obviously, would be at the other end, which is, we have no interest in doing this. We're not going to approve this, even if we have money available. And the middle group, which would be, let's see what else is in the pipeline, and we'll work out which ones we want to support once more applications are reviewed and recommendations are made by the ARPA committee.
Yeah, I don't have, I mean, I don't have an issue breaking them up. I just think we, I mean, I think they should be done by department, you know? So, if they're, it's a school situation, and they put in seven articles, then we should be, you know, looking at those seven articles at one, at one time. Same with, you know, rec or whatever else there is. I think it's competent to come back and forth and keep going, you know, through them, you know? And even to kind of grade it out based on what we think personally, you know, is necessary. And even to kind of grade it out based on what we think personally, you know, is necessary to happen or not happen. But, I mean, that's my personal opinion, I think we just.
I think you're saying the same thing, we need to have an entire picture before we can start thinking.
Yeah, no, you're not all 27.
No, I'm sure some of those have already been dismissed.
Right, right.
But we did put the committee in place to make the recommendations, so, you know, weigh that accordingly, but.
We need all of them.
Look at all of them, yeah. Look, you gave us a giant pack of them a couple of weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have them.
I mean, they're, they're.
We have the list.
Yeah.
What would you suggest, I mean, what would you say, how far would you say they're in? I know they're going to meeting Wednesday night again, so how far would you think they, they are into the, into those 27 right now? What, half?
I think, as David mentioned, I think they've only made recommendations or three or four of them so far.
I know they've broken them up, because I know that they've, they've gone, you know, with the schools anyways, that they, they looked at three particular ones to start with, and they'll go back and look at some other ones once, once that's done. I don't know what that order, what the reason behind that is, but I could care less.
Well, as I said, Melanie, I, I don't, it's not necessary for the board to make any decisions tonight. What I can do, however, is Melanie and I can provide more information to you based on what has happened already and what happens on Wednesday night as to where things stand. And then, you know, I can, you know, we can go back to ARPA meeting and say, please continue the process. The board will, they decide to wait on making any decisions about what to send to Plymouth County or what to, you know, use the town money for until the ARPA committee's done or reviews it or from the applications.
Right, I think that's, that's the way to go.
Yep.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Last action item, to discuss stormwater regulations and possible creation of a revolving fund.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion?
I think, based on what I would kind of heard from the track meeting last week, I'm not sure that the regulations are in final form. One thing, I think there might be a couple of town departments want to take another look. The second is that in the interim, we determined that the stormwater bylaw that was approved by town meeting back in May requires a public hearing on any regulations. So that that includes, there will be a public hearing, it's been posted properly on November 28th, the selectmen, regular selectmen's meeting that night. So, guys, where things stand right now, there are no decisions that the board needs to make tonight. But we should have the final regulations available before the 28th. We can include the discussion, a possible decision on the regs, and also on the revolving fund. I'm John Ains, Melanie Lindberg, and myself should be meeting sometime next week to talk about the mechanics for the stormwater revolving fund. We'll bring a report back to the board for the 28th.
Yep, thank you.
That's the end of our action items, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We want to open and, I'm assuming close, and we're not going to close, we're going to extend it to a different date, right?
The public hearing that we started on November, when did we, two weeks ago? Anyhow, we were scheduled to.
There's just some, yeah, paperwork she has to get together.
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to reg, requirements of MGL Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held relative to the application of a new license, general on premises annual all alcoholic. Elizabeth Wilson, doing business as Pony Town Parties, Homestead Harvest, Elizabeth Williams Manager, premises 1194 Plymouth Street. The continued public hearing will be held at Town Hall, first floor conference room, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Monday, November 7, 2022, at 6:00 PM. For the record, the applicant has asked, and we have agreed to move this until November 28th, at a time to be determined now.
So we have a hearing at 6 o'clock on the 28th, so this could either be 5:30 or 6:30.
I would go for 5:30.
5:30?
Sure.
Second.
Okay, motion's made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, okay, thank you. So we don't have a moderator here yet. Want to move to discussion?
Yeah, do you want to let this lady?
Yes, I was going to say, yeah, we want to jump ahead to discussion. All right.
You ready for me?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, we're ready for you.
He can sit in the comfy one now. So again, my name is Lisa Bellantengrifer in 737 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Mass. I'm not sure if you're familiar with my issue. I did call Town Hall today, I spoke with, okay, I thought so, I wasn't 100% sure. And, you know, trying to be open-minded about the issues. Politics can be very divisive and emotional, so I'm going to put those feelings aside and just go with, you know, what I witnessed. And I live on that street, I lived on that street for almost 19 years. And the common has always been a place, what I had interpreted as a place of peace, pace of love, a place where people, families get together, you know, it's been a place of harmony. What I saw today was very divisive in the sense that there was monopoly of signs for a political party. All I could imagine if I was traveling through the town, not being aware of this town, and saying, geez, whose, whose, whose agenda is this? Somebody's pushing this agenda because there was no other representation. And then I said to myself, sorry, I don't know why I said that, I just talked to myself.
That's fine.
That, so, okay, so when I called, so I, I understand you can stand there with a sign. I've been here enough to see people at the.
Center of town, yeah.
The, no, the, where the lights are?
Center.
Oh, the center, thank you, thank you. Fine, have a sign, stand there. I've had two signs stolen from my house because people didn't believe in it. And yet, there's going to be signs for another party that can have a safe place to put their sign. Whereas, whereas I, I, in my own home, signs have been stolen on my property. So, then I thought to myself, so what happens? So I can get a sign, then my friends can get a sign, and then the independents can get a sign, because I'm Republican. So, it, what's it going to look like? That's going to look a mess to me. If everybody has the same right for, to, to be unified in their beliefs and have a place to speak with a sign, it's going to be a mess. That's not family, that's not harmony, that's not helping the town get better. That's creating divisiveness, in my opinion. I don't know how this decision was made. If people voted on it and, and I, and they disagree with me, fine. But it just, it seemed like there was a decision that was made that could really disrupt the sacredness of that property, which is what people pay for. And that's, and that's how I feel.
So I'm going to, I'm going to defer to David, he was kind of in the middle of this, from the beginning and then we can go away.
That's whatever you wanted to.
And I'm sure you're going to disagree with me.
You're the chair, oh, no, no, I don't think anybody disagrees with you.
Not at all, not at all, we've got, we don't.
Your, your intelligence, your thought, and I can assure you, you were not the only person in town that had the same thought.
I'm the only, one of the few people here, but I really feel like it's important.
A couple of weeks ago, a request came in to have a, get the vote out on the town common. And maybe it was my thinking, my mis, all's that would be is what you were saying here. We're going to have the same thing up here as we have down at Town Hall, at the center of town.
Right.
I did not realize that we were going to have signs all around the town common. As a veteran, I was very upset to see them over by the field of flags, which, again, is something that is very sacred to, to everybody.
Exactly.
Again, we can take the blame, I'll take the blame, that there was probably a miscommunication along the line somewhere. What I would like to do is, first of all, if I understand it correctly, Rebecca, let me back me up, tell me, the town has a right, this has nothing to do with the state.
Yeah, no, I, I actually, yeah, I did find that out, I was mistaken and.
To decide if or when political signs can go anywhere in the town of East Bridgewater, that's under jurisdiction of the board of selectmen. We may, between now and the next time, take a look at what should we allow up there. I agree that it was not a good, not a good showing there. I didn't know it was going to happen like that. And again, if that was a miscommunication, we can apologize to everyone for tomorrow. What I would like to do, and I don't know if we can turn around and amend our permit from two weeks ago, to ask them, first of all, we only would like to, if you're going to be there continuously tomorrow, we would like one sign per person, and we would like to stop that at 4:00 PM when it starts to get dark, because that is, there are no lights over there. That's a very, very big safety hazard. But a lot of veterans called me, a lot of residents called me with the same thought that, what are we turning this town into?
Right.
And let's now go forward, it's behind us, hopefully.
Yeah.
And we will take steps to, as you said, keep East Bridgewater away from the political thing and just continue to.
We have more to offer, our town is a beautiful town, and we just, we just have more to offer than that, than adding.
Sure.
That's my thoughts.
Yeah, that's what we want to start with, Carol.
I agree on some things and disagree on some things. So, this was the Democratic Town Committee who came to us and asked for permission to do this.
Yeah.
The Republican Town Committee could have chosen to also do that, and they didn't. Democratic Town Committee took the initiative, filed the paperwork, you know, and got permission to do it. I don't think that's wrong, I don't think that's necessarily divisive. The Republican Town Committee would have been just as welcome, you know, if they had gotten the same permit, we would have issued it the same way. So, maybe going forward, we do say, you know what, the common is not a place where we're going to allow this. And if that's under our jurisdiction, then, then that's fine. But I don't think, I, I really don't think we should change anything for tomorrow. I think we're going to open a can of worms if we do that, other than maybe limiting like after dark. But I, we, we issued the permit, you know, I knew it was going to be political. I mean, it was, it came from where it came from, we knew that that's, you know, what it would be.
But if everybody joined that party, if it's not, if everybody had, if a Republican, say, came forward and say, we would like to space, and you would have to say, yes, they have it, you're, it's a mess.
Well, it's not, it's only there during an active time. They're not allowed to leave the signs, and I know that there was a little bit of a kerfuffle over signs that were left while somebody left, and no, that's not at all what we expect. And I mean, and that is definitely something we should consider.
I do think that it should be a separate space for, I just think that the, that the veterans, they've had those constitute, you know, when they reenact the Civil War.
Oh, yeah, that's my husband and I.
All right, see, look at it, you know, like, I pay attention, you know? Like, those, that, to me, like, let's, let's try to keep it educational for the children, for the elderly, for the seniors, not for political, I just feel like, I know the town maybe doesn't have another spot for people.
I think it's almost one of those things where, like, you don't know until you know.
Yeah.
And we didn't know until we allowed it, that, you know what, maybe this is uncomfortable for some people. Maybe we say to the two committees, hey, come together and pick a day where you do, like, when they do the local elections and they have a candidate's night together, you know what I mean? Maybe we get them to work together so that they represent equally if that's something that they want to do on a specific, you know, time, but I.
Fair is fair.
Until we do it, we didn't know what it would look like, if that, you know, if you indulge me at least in that.
I do, I do, listen, I, I saw the Civil War, I gave you credit for that, you know, the reenactment.
Yeah, yeah, well, we don't do that anymore.
Oh, you don't do it, it's been a while, huh?
Body, as I was saying.
Right.
No matter who made that, it was not what I envisioned, it didn't matter who it was. I don't care if it was not even a political party, for someone to take over the common like that.
Yeah, it was.
You know, it's, we, we just need to do something in the future.
It felt like a monopoly to me.
Well, it was, it was one side that had requested the use, so in that respect, it was just one-sided.
And even still, I don't agree with any political, like, you can agree with it being fair with all the political parties, but I still think that is sacred.
I think that's a valid point.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I agree on, on all accounts. You know, I was, as, as Carol and David both were, were, didn't really put much, a lot of thought into, you know, when they, when we were approached.
Right.
Hey, we're going to go up there and do some signs. I always look at it like everybody else would look at it, center of town, right? A couple of some people come up, they hold sometimes, maybe they're this way, maybe they're this way, whatever the case may be. You know, there is another portion of, of, which will have to be addressed down the line, for sure, probably sooner than later, what we want to do and where we want to do it. Let's first say in the common is, you know, sacred off grounds, you know, it's to get the memorial there. Juana's Club does the field of the flag, I mean, all these things that go on there, then we, we talk about that and we make a vote. But to Carol's point, going forward for tomorrow, you know, if they want to come hold signs, I would ask them, you know, just, I'm not telling them, I would be asking them if they could, you know, limit to the, to the people that are there holding signs. That would be great, we don't want to take away from, you know, what's already over there and the work that Juana's has put in and whatnot. And then the other thing would be the fact that, you know, it is a risk if, when it gets dark. So, you know, to, to, I don't think that's a big request to have it shut down by 4:00 o'clock, there is no lighting over there.
As it was today.
Yeah, which they left at that time today. But, you know, you, you don't know what you're going to get until you actually get it for the first time. And then you make adjustments so that everybody feels more comfortable. It certainly wasn't done by this board for any, either side, right? I mean, at all, I mean, I don't think there's anyone less political than this board right here.
No, I can understand you, you know, oh, sure, you know, like, but, but I just see it a dom, I just see it building into a mess.
And we need to discuss where it is that, you know, where those, where those spots are.
Yeah.
And, and we do have the opportunity and the right to, to discuss it, but we don't want that just to be a three-person agreement. We want it to be a town agreement, you know, where they think it belongs and where it doesn't belong. And we'll do that, we'll take the steps to do that.
Right.
Going forward for tomorrow, again, it's open there, we just ask.
I'm going to vote tomorrow, I'll just ignore her, I'll just keep my eyes closed.
Well, at least go, go around the other way.
Right.
Yeah, I'll take the back road. I want to thank the board for listening to me, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Lisa.
Appreciate it, yeah.
And these two members also live on Central Street.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
I live closer than you.
And, and he, and he lives on Central Street, too.
I live below in the lawn.
I know, we're still discussing it.
Oh, well, my husband was the one who got hit by a caramel in the lawn, so.
Oh, I remember, that's just two streets, two, two houses up.
I live right on the corner of Stevens Court.
Yeah, okay.
Because I want to stop, Kim, now, and speak on that same thing, because it was, it's, it's by law, you cannot do that.
No, we.
It's very clear, I talked to the Office of Political Campaign today, you can't leave unattended signs on public property.
Right, well, we didn't approve that, though.
Okay, okay, but they were there, because I, I live closer than you guys. And I would find that three times in the morning and they were all there. I don't know who they were for.
As soon as that was brought to the town's attention, it would come down.
But you can't even, there's not even discussion of saying, well, we can let one side, then let the other side go, because if you read the law, it's very clear. We even, we even borderline a little bit on the schools, when someone puts one at the beginning of the school and they're holding a sign within 150 yards of the, that's still, it's still, I think, if you read the law, it's kind of iffy to do that, too. But I understand that, at least they're there. But if, but when you're discussing like bulk town, can you still, I, you can't, I don't think you can do that.
We want to ask them not to leave the signs.
No, no.
Oh, any, well, anybody can hold the sign.
Well, that's, that's all we have.
You don't need permission to hold the sign.
Right.
That was the only thing that that permit asked for.
Yeah.
Because you don't even need a permit to hold the signs, it's clear, I mean, you can hold the sign as long as you don't interfere with traffic or.
Right.
So, I was surprised when I saw it, and I mentioned to people, and, and, again, maybe just innocently done by the people, the signs were left there for a long period of time, I mean, they didn't, they didn't like leave by, you know, come back in two minutes.
Right.
Right.
But I started going by a couple of times late in the morning, and, and then they were down later in the day.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks to the town board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Full drive?
We possibly bring, we're, continue the discussions?
Sure.
Board discussions, David, you have something, or?
He must.
Yeah, you must be.
But we, we do have two points.
Yep, that's to Rebecca.
Two points?
Board discussions.
Board discussions, more.
Oh, yeah. Charlie also has an update on the Home Rule legislation.
Why don't we come back to Charlie, sorry, Charlie, come back to you. Let's bring, oh, we still got 10 minutes, right? I'm sorry, the appointment with, with you, Bob, is at 6:30, right?
Yeah, I got it, I got it, things, so I'll be down here at 6:00, because I think it's.
Yeah, well, it's 6:20, so you missed that.
Yeah, of course not.
I know, because I didn't, I even looked at the agenda, it said.
Couldn't get by the signs.
No, I looked at the agenda, it said 6:30.
He was distracted by the signs.
And then I saw your email just a little while ago, after I got down here.
Why don't we jump into you right now?
Yep.
All right, we'll do that, then we'll get back to Charlie, and we'll finish up with Rebecca, and then we'll get the hell out of here.
The motions are in the hands of Town Council.
Oh, okay.
And I won't get them until tomorrow or the next day.
That's fine.
So we'll just have to go off of, um, warrant.
That was the only question.
Sue, you're still standing, ready for the big day tomorrow?
No, you're making her come out here tonight. All right, we have our special time meeting next Monday at the high school, 7:00. Some of these articles are pretty wordy.
Yeah.
Don't look at us. We didn't write them.
I know. Most of the lawyers write them or something.
And I know you're not going to accept anyone as written. They are to be written.
As, as printed. Can we just do the whole warrant, as printed? All in favor?
And I'm guessing the ones that I see crossed down are mine, are no longer.
Those will be those newer.
Yeah, there were a bunch.
Yeah, there was four of them. Yep.
Is that all?
Oh, right. Cross them more as we go here.
There may be, yeah, there may be others.
But for now, it was the four.
All of them?
All the selectmen ones are all you.
Nice, appreciate that. All right.
I mean, I don't think there's anything. They're all pretty straightforward. I mean, we can just go who's going to, who's going to, uh.
Yep.
Yeah, just to sign.
Present them. I guess Pete, you can start the night.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, so you answered the question, because I was reading it, and I was talking to somebody and said, there's no, I mean, the minds will be on the motion, I take it. They have, okay. These, the articles have nothing about what money, the amounts.
Right.
They'll be on the motion.
Should be, yes.
Okay.
Are you going to go on like the two-thirds or whatever?
I don't even know. I haven't checked them all yet, because I just got them. Okay, well, the first one, obviously, I mean, I haven't gone through, because I, I just got this the other day, so I haven't gone through the vote requirements, but we'll have that all before the meeting. Could have done it when you were driving around looking at the signs. I drive very fast here. When you live that close, as Peter knows, you see them quickly when you drive by, and you know.
Town Council's a review on that too, so they'll put that in the motion.
Yeah. Peter, then, again, obviously, we're just, what do we have in front of us? Just talked about funds. We don't know what funds or anything like that. So, we don't know what, how much they're looking for, which is tough, because if people are looking at this, like if someone gets this, comes down, and they go, I don't know what, should I go? I don't know what the monies are, so hopefully, the motion we've made available, maybe ahead of time or something too. So, Pete will do that one. These, these first ones are just majority anyway. And then Carol do the second?
Yeah. I don't know. I write this down every time, and then you give us the whole packet anyway, so.
Yeah, I write it down too. I don't even know who the, I apologize, but I don't even know who the head of the Capitol Budget Committee is right now.
Capitol, Dave Walsh.
Oh, okay. So, we'll give him the third. Again, you're just transferring appropriate money, just majority right now, these ones we're doing now. Dave, number four?
Yep.
We'll go back to you, Pete, number five?
Yep.
Six and seven are off. Carol, you number eight? So, I think number eight's a majority, but we get into this, you know, accepting the buy, I'll have to go through, I'll have to double check those when we set up our stabilization thing.
I think I'll do the, um.
So, you want to?
I'll do eight.
You'll do eight.
What about you? Don't trust me?
Do you want to do the whole group ones that deal with that?
Yeah.
So, you want to do eight, nine?
You want me to do four then, since it's the library?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, now you're, all right.
We all have our little niche.
So, Carol's doing four. David, you'll do, will you do eight, nine, 10, 11? They all have to do with the, well, they all have to do with, they all have to do with that.
Yep.
Yeah, that opioid stabilization.
It's the Dave Sheedy Special Town Meeting.
Well, Carol, what have you given? Do you have you do number 12?
Thanks.
13 and 14, oh. Pete, number 15? That's just a majority. David, 16?
I'll give Peter 16.
Yeah, they go together.
Oh, okay.
Kind of.
And 17.
I was going to say, you don't, you don't know, so, right, Pete?
Yep.
All right, so we'll give you a six, 15, 16, 17.
And 17, you need to read the whole. You got to read that, man. Stop practicing, stop practicing now.
Imagine that.
Maybe we could make a video of you reading it. You could do a video.
Yeah, put it on a machine.
And we'll just like put that up on the screen.
Holy mackerel.
We'll be serving pizza as it starts to.
I want to see people walk out. Let them start.
Yeah, we do.
David, number 18?
Yes.
Carol, 19?
Sure. My hope is on that one.
Pete, you want to do 20, because the accountant doesn't live in town, right? So, Pete, you want to do 20?
She does, actually.
She does?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Melanie, yeah.
Well, we can get her to do it, for her to do the first one.
Yeah.
I know she lived in town for the missus, yeah. Well, you get 21, Pete?
Yep.
Tam Ham will have 22. They'll have 23 also. 24 also.
23 would be the fire chief.
Yeah, 24, 22, 23, 24.
Oh, he's 22, yes.
Roy Siller, chairman?
Yes.
Roy Gardner will have 25. And then this book will be, you got 26.
26 is.
26?
Yeah, the book. Oh, oh, that's, that's separate from the book? No, I say the book, because I've been saying all the stuff that goes with it.
Yeah, right.
Claire, Claire, you'll come?
Claire won't be around.
Alex. Alex will do it.
Claire won't be around on the 14th.
All right.
Okay.
Craig Windsor.
He's not a resident.
Craig.
Craig Windsor can do it.
Okay. He doesn't know, but he'll make him read the whole.
Craig going to speak to you after that, or?
And same for 27.
And we have some at the end. I know we have a couple of.
Page 32.
Oh, that's it, right? No, we have.
Page 32, there's a article 27.
Yeah. And we'll have Craig do that one too?
Mm-hmm.
Boy.
And, 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 unless you have any questions, I think I suggest that people get the opportunity.
Ahead of time.
I think I suggest that people get the opportunity to pick up the book, read ahead of time, because I, I, if they can suddenly fail, we don't need to have the whole thing written on some of those. Just do it as printed.
Yep.
So, hopefully, people will, oh, she really wanted to read that, don't you?
I've talked enough about this, so they don't want to hear me say.
So, there does not appear to be any nine-tenths required, because there's no, there's no pass due or anything, so that's a good thing. I think there might be a couple of two-thirds. I just got to check it on the, I sent up the stabilization fund. I think that was a two-thirds in the past. And I'll double check it. So, other than if everyone's all politicized out, hopefully, it's be there next Monday at 7:00. We'll try to start at, I know you people were generous and didn't ask me, but letting the congressman speak, I got a notice.
Did you?
From somebody.
Oh. Is he coming?
He, I mean, he asked.
He asked.
Oh, oh, oh.
He asked whether he'd come.
You know, it's being.
The election will be over.
Yeah, and I also, I, like I said before, you know, in my 18 years doing it, he's the only federal official that's, he can come down, and he just keeps it, you know, like anybody, including myself, we talk a lot, but he does keep it to pertinent things. It may not necessarily be what we're talking about local, but he does give us a federal.
Yep.
Yeah, he was great.
Yeah.
And, and like I said, and he doesn't politicize it, but he, but he's the only one that's, you know, again, you've lived in town, like, I mean, a lot of you, I've lived here for 37 years. He's the only federal official that, that we've had come down.
Yep.
And he's made it three or four times since I've been.
Yeah, he was here last week.
Yeah, so if he, you know, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, right.
Agree.
And I think that's, as I said, if there's any questions, I think that's it.
I had something for Concom. Just, there was a discrepancy between what Concom has submitted to selectmen and what was posted in the warrant, and I had mentioned to Charlie and Julie, asked that I come and write about what, what the discrepancy was. So, I printed off part of page here to share with you all. This is the beginning of Article 26. The intent is to relocate these out of the town bylaw into, into the regulations of the updated article bylaw. So, it would have been right at the beginning of Article 26. This would have. I suppose so, yeah. It is that fees would go in the regulations of the bylaw if the bylaw is approved. In the event the bylaw is not approved, the next article, Article 27, is to at least update the fees as they're found in the town bylaw, just to get current with filing fees with surrounding towns.
So, page 33, it's in there.
Yeah, but it's not, that's exactly the same.
But it's, but it's, but it's not, it's under Article 27. It's different.
Right, so, so the idea is that if it's part of Article 26, it would strike out the miscellaneous section fees, and they would be found in the regulations of the approved Article 26.
He's saying if.
So, then when we would not need Article 27?
So, exactly, then you would pass over 27.
Oh, oh.
So, this is.
27 is like a fail-safe.
Right. We want to pay. Don't care if they want the bylaw.
We want it updated.
We're going to come out with every article we can, until those fees are passed.
At the very least, we want them updated.
Absolutely, so.
So, we want to make sure that they're still with, that this change, if you will, is still within the scope.
Might have to be a motion to amend. It's not, it's not even published.
You did that at the meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I think that maybe you should tell Greg, Greg, that you should maybe do a motion to amend to include this, because it's not even published.
Okay.
It has to be out at a certain time ahead of time.
Okay.
And that would, and just, and just say, you know, to amend it by putting, you know, at the beginning of the, you know, beginning of the article.
Okay.
You still get two cracks out of it. That's the only one?
That's it.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
All right, see you guys Monday night.
Thank you, Ben.
Good luck tomorrow with you, Sue.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, so, yeah, we'll go back to. We'll go to Charlie, then we can finish up with.
Johnny's getting tired.
Polly's getting tired? All right, Charlie, what do you got? You're up.
I got bored and laughed. She just walked away and went downstairs. Something exciting happening up here in the report. I know that Peter has been, has been constantly contacting our legislators about updates on our home rule petitions. And at least he was able to get some good news on the sewer district and on the acceptance of street of legislation in that, at least a few days ago, they got an out of the committee that sort of assigned scheduling and had gone into the House floor and were now at the third reading. I don't know if anything's happened in the last couple of days, but that's a remarkable improvement over the inaction during the last three or four months. So, progress is happening up there on Beacon Hill. Yeah, another thing, we had a public announcement last week, but just in case folks don't know, the town did get two one-stop-the-throw grants, $4 million for the sanitary sewer system, and then also $75,000 for a master plan. Also, we didn't get the grant for the precise engineering site for the ground heels. And what we heard back from the state was they wanted more shovel-ready projects. And until the building that's on the precise engineering site is taken down, the work that would need to be done in clarifying the site of the contaminated soils or containing those soils can't be done. And their recommendation is to go back, whatever the next round of grants that might be available, whether it's one-stop-the-throw or other possibilities, and apply for sufficient funding for the site preparation, which would mean getting the building down. Our consultant is going back to look at the estimates that had come up for taking down the building, and we'll see what we can do in terms of applying for grants or other sources of funding for that work. But obviously, getting the other two grants was monumental. Totally thrilled with the work that the board did, department heads, our engineering, for, everybody pitched in, made that a reality, could be a rock, and the CPC, about everybody working together on this, I'm sure that we would die of gun in that grant, especially that we only applied for $3 million, and we've got four. So, I tip of the hat to everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Rebecca, you got some announcements?
No, just town meeting next Monday, the 14th, and the next selectman's meeting's the 28th.
Thank you. Okay, then we can follow up with the board discussions. David, do you have anything else you want to throw at us?
No.
Carol?
No.
I'm good too. I'm following up on Charlie's work here. It's been great. Again, congratulations on the 75, too. I know the, the $4 million kind of overshadowed that a little bit, you know, took a little your thunder away. But, no, it was great, yeah, it's going to help.
My master plan is a great.
Absolutely.
Been working on that for three years now, maybe we can get it done.
Right, right. All right, thank you.
Charlie, are we going into executive?
Um, I have nothing on union contracts at this point. I didn't know whether the board wants, had any interest in discussing the non-union personnel matters. If there, if there isn't, then there's no reason to go with exact.
Okay.
I think we can each individually, I mean, I know, I know Charlie sent us an email regarding that. I think if each of us has a conversation with him, what our thoughts are, and give us a couple, you gave us a couple scenarios. So, let's follow up with you this week on, on those, and we get back to the table and maybe get something for the next meeting, if possible.
Okay.
Do that, all right?
Sure.
All right. All right, so you know, nothing else? Motion to adjourn?
So, move Mr. Chairman.
Second. Did you have something?
I thought I was supposed to have come tonight to get, I'm a member, I, I applied to be a member of the Finance Committee?
Yep, so, yep.
Oh, yeah.
You're on, your appointment.
Oh, okay.
Come on up.
Congratulations.
5:30.
Right, it was, yeah, it was a little earlier.
Yeah, come, come on up real quick. Well, sorry about that. I just assumed you were about the signs.
Usually not me.
Oh, first of all, thank you for, you know, joining this, this committee. It's, you know, a big need, obviously, and you're filling a big hole for us. We appreciate that, but enough about that. Why don't you tell us just name, address, give us a little bit background of your hows and whys and whatever you know?
So, I'm Lisa Ellington. I'm on 55 Bridge Street in East Bridgewater. I love numbers and like to help out wherever I can, so happy to be a member of the Finance Committee and see where I can learn more about the town, because I'm fairly new to the town, so.
Where you coming from?
Rockland.
Okay, close, yeah, great. Yeah, Dan Peek is the chair over there. I think you'll, you'll find him very easy to work with.
Yeah.
Really good guy, and I know the rest of that, that committee that they put together is fairly new, just, just like yourself.
Yes.
At least two or three new members.
Yeah.
So, again, thank you very much for jumping on, and I think your first meeting's tomorrow, right?
Yes, well, I went last week.
Oh, okay.
And introduced myself.
Yep.
And then they told me to come tonight.
Yep.
And then.
So, you have to go to, does she have to go to the, to?
You got to get sworn in. Right, so tomorrow, we're going to, yeah, type up a letter for you, and it'll just state that you have to go to the clerk's office to get sworn in.
Okay.
So, you, you probably won't be able to do it tomorrow.
Okay.
But the meeting is tomorrow, I believe?
Yeah.
So, you won't be able to vote, but you'll be able to attend.
Okay, that's fine. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
Nice to have someone new in town getting involved. That's great.
Just the first of many committees you'll be on.
I know, get ready.
We'll email you the list of the other ones that, that you can jump on as well. Thanks again.
All right, thank you.
Okay, motions made. Second, all in favor of adjourn?
Aye.